Good afternoon, I'm calling to order a city council meeting that's been properly noticed for Thursday, April 30th, 2020. Kristin Rush, if you'll do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good, all council members are present, thank you for coming together on short notice to address a resolution, Mr. Devon, if you want to explain the resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a extension of the emergency declaration to May 30th, and the first thing I want to do as I explain this is really apologize to all of you for the fact that we had to call this as emergency meeting. When I was, as I was contemplating whether or not I wanted to ask for an extension of the emergency declaration, I was influenced by some of the discussions that we had had, the council had had with our team, about really wanting to return to normal and get back to a normalcy, if you will. And I really didn't consult with my team about that, I just felt that pending any real important information that would compel me to ask for this emergency declaration to be extended, as we were returning to normal council meetings, a normal scheduled council meetings and those kinds of things, I felt it was probably okay to let this emergency declaration expire. What I did not take into account, and what was brought to my attention yesterday by Vanessa James, who's doing an absolutely fantastic job, is our resilience manager in this emergency, is that if we were to allow the emergency declaration to expire, it could hurt our opportunities to get disaster-related funding and relief from FEMA and other sources. And she pointed out that nearly all, well, pretty much all of our adjacent communities have extended the emergency order well into May, some have extended it indefinitely. Westminster, a few other cities have not, Wheat Ridge have not actually specified a date. I kind of like, what I would propose, what we're proposing today, is to extend the emergency declaration to May 30th, and then prior to that time, perhaps at the May 18th meeting, or possibly at the, well, probably the May 18th meeting, because it's the last meeting that we'll have before the May 30th date. Then we would review the situation at that time, determine whether or not we want to extend it beyond May 30th, and bring it to you in the form of a resolution at the May 18th meeting. And, you know, honestly, I would certainly look to have a discussion with all of you even before that. But I consider this, the fact that we're having this emergency meeting today, a little bit of a mistake on my part for not bringing this to your attention beforehand. You know, frankly, having emergency authority scares the heck out of me. And...
Scares us too, Devon.
I know, I know, and I don't blame you. I can assure you, though, I will not do anything crazy like my colleague in Wheat Ridge did. And, but the fact of the matter is that, that I'm much more comfortable operating in the normal situation. But from the standpoint of being able to be eligible for this funding, that is the primary driver. And I think there's also a possibility that as we proceed with getting our facility ready for reopening, as we look at purchasing additional PPE, sneeze guards, excuse me, for our team that works at the counter, you know, temperature checks potentially, you know, these are things we're looking at right now for people who enter City Hall, additional PPE, things like that, for people who enter City Hall. We, you know, we might need to use at least some part of that emergency authority. But honestly, the majority of what we're asking for here is really associated with keeping us eligible for the maximum emergency level funding that we can get.
Very good, any questions from council? Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yeah, Mr. Devon, could you maybe give some highlights of what this means to our citizens? Because last time we did this, there was some confusion between the stay-home order and your emergency. And maybe you can give some highlights of what does it mean for us to approve the extension of the emergency?
Sure, be happy to, Mr. Pfeiffer. The emergency authority really provides me with the ability to make decisions, allocate funds, and approve contracts, make some changes in service levels directly associated with the city. For example, one, probably the most profound use of the emergency authority that I've had to this date has been the allocation of the $2.5 million of the emergency business loan program. Now, obviously, I consulted with the city council before I did that. But, and we generally discussed the parameters with all of you actually at a workshop before we went ahead and put the program together. But the actual signing off on the disbursement of funds was accomplished under my emergency authority. The city attorney actually wrote an emergency order that almost resembled, if you will, a resolution that the city council would normally be asked to approve, but she referenced to the emergency order and the authority, you know, based on our city code, in order to justify and set the conditions for the allocation of $2.5 million for that loan program. It does not impact, for example, any of the orders that might come from a public health authority or the governor. It doesn't compete in any way with that. The city code's very specific in terms of what authority this provides. So it really is mostly focused around the allocation of city resources and how we conduct city business. And along with that, I might ask the city attorney to weigh in to see if there's anything big that I might have missed.
Mr. Devon, that's exactly what I would have said. There are certain specific things under our city code, under chapter 26, that the city manager is permitted to do during a declared emergency. The fact that we're extending this declaration does not mean that he will do any of those things. Our primary purpose and reasoning behind extending the emergency declaration is to keep us eligible for emergency funding. So I think that's really, that's really the purpose of extending the declaration.
Hey, any other questions? Ms. Ford, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move that R 20-033, a resolution authorizing a third extension of the effective date of the city manager's declaration of emergency relating to the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, and the associated public health crisis be approved.
A motion's for approval, I will do a roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tim Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Marriott.
Yes.
Ms. Simpson.
Yes.
Mayor says aye aye, we're good, you got a 7-0. There is no other business on the agenda, do we want to discuss anything else, Mr. Devon or Ms. Morris?
Well, I don't know if I, I don't know if it's a good idea to bring this up, but I know the council's been having a lot of discussion regarding public health orders and things along those lines. I don't know if you guys want to take an opportunity to talk about that. I just got off a conference call with Adams County that included the officer, the public health officer for tri-county health, and the information that was presented, you know, could offer some perspective for this discussion, I don't know. But in any case, I wanted to at least offer maybe some feedback of what I, of the conference call I just got off of.
I think that would be good.
Okay, so, the conference call I just, I just left to attend this meeting, really focused from the tri-county health standpoint, of course, you know, I'm on that call because of our section of Arvada that's in Adams County, really focused on the implementation of the recovery after the current public health order expires on May the 8th. In fact, it talked about and discussed, you know, certain focus areas that we want to, you know, kind of work with the business community and the nonprofit community, and, you know, school districts and things along those, you know, organizations similar to that, about how we move forward into a new normal. And, and not, there was no, and the tri-county health officer was on the call, there was no mention of extending the health order, he didn't go there. Now, I suppose something could change between now and Friday, May 8th, that could trigger that. But the meeting and the discussion really focused on, what are we going to do? And how are we going to proceed beginning May 9th with, when these restrictions are lifted? And we're not under the same stay-at-home order that we're under right now. You know, for example, how are we going to help the business community? How are we going to help with social distancing and things along those lines? So, and the only reason why I bring that up is because so far, you know, with maybe a little, a few little mistakes or, you know, flub ups, if you will, Jefferson County Public Health and tri-county public health have moved pretty much in unison. And since I didn't get an impression that they were going to extend, that tri-county health was going to extend the public health order, I'm kind of thinking that Jefferson County is at least for right now in the same, in the same situation. I don't know that, you know, I suppose we might hear more as we, as we have, you know, the Zoom meeting with the county commissioners tomorrow. But I just wanted to offer that since it was something that literally I just got off the phone with.
Right, yeah, there's, and of course, there's lots of discussions about face covering, and I've called and left a message for Dr. Johnson regarding the general consensus from Arvada that we just assume not see mandatory, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Yeah, Mr. Marriott, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, I have a question for Mark Devon. You mentioned, and this may have, might have been your words, not their words, but you said how we move forward in our new normal. If those are their words, that scares me because that tells me that the health department directors are going to dictate what normal is now. Did you get the sense that that was, that was kind of their plan? Was they working out their next edict for what normal will be? Or did you get the sense that their plan is that they'll be paying attention to the health and the statistics and everything around it and kind of letting, letting the world, throwing the shackles off, so to speak?
So my impression, Councilmember Marriott, is that I probably knew normal, that was my words, not theirs, and that's probably a bad description. The normal for the next phase, in my mind, what was described today during this call was similar to the phases that the governor has described, you know, the safer-at-home phase, and, you know, moving ultimately to a situation sometime in the future where it would, where we would return to, in the governor's slides, he used the Colorado way of life, where we would actually return to that Colorado way of life. Now, you know, this was all bracketed with the fact that they want these decisions to be data-driven. And there is a lot of discussion occurring about what happens if we get a second wave. And, you know, nobody wants a second wave, I certainly don't want a second wave. And none of the public officials, managers, or anybody that I've talked to certainly want that, but they also feel that we need to be prepared. And part of, part of the drive in this discussion was, how do we conduct our business so that we do everything we can to prevent a second wave from hitting? You know, sometime in the, in the fall or perhaps the winter. So that was kind of the focus of the discussion. And, you know, I took it, at least I interpreted it as a positive because it's moving from where we are right now, which is basically a stay-at-home order, into a next phase. And if we can control everything, you know, if we don't have a second wave, then I would see us being able to move further again. There was also discussion about a vaccine, and I don't think we have any reliable data on this, but I believe there's some discussion about a possible vaccine, you know, before the end of this year, as opposed to, say, 18 months away. So, you know, I don't think any of this, I wouldn't want to, you know, convey the gospel, that this is the gospel truth, but these are, these are discussions that are ongoing right now.
Okay, let me ask just a quick follow-up question. Did they mention anything about just conforming to the governor's order? Or did you get the sense that they're going to do their own version of the governor's order since we're kind of off the governor's timetable now? You know, in other words, the governor started the safer-at-home on the 27th, and then there's two or three dates after that where different things can happen. All of those will be in place by May 8th, when these local health department orders expire. Are they going to, you know, try to follow the model that the governor set? And release their own milestones or benchmarks or dates that certain things are going to happen? Or did you get the sense that they're going to, May 8th is going to roll around, and they're going to say, okay, now we're on the governor's track and schedule?
What I picked up from the discussion today is that it's going to be more the latter, that we're going to be on the safer-at-home, you know, program that the governor's laid out. There might be some, you know, again, we kind of couched it in some, in some additional work that they are seeking for all of us to commit to, mainly what I'm talking about is the managers and members of their team to commit to, but essentially, it's the safer-at-home framework.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Actually, I'm good, I just, all I would say is, we need to just encourage our peers within the health organizations that we need to move forward. I feel we've idled a long time, I get the health perspectives and concerns, but there's so many different perspectives and depth and breadth of all the things that take place in a community and society that we just need to be aware of. And I just encourage that we just move forward and cautiously move forward, I should say.
Sure. So, Mr. Devon, based upon my conversation with other mayors today, as I emailed all of you, that they were somewhat surprised that we could look at May 18th as a hybrid meeting date. Is that something you guys think we can still pull off?
Well, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. We actually met about that extensively this morning. And I think I have a few members of my team that would be willing to weigh in. I'm pretty sure Lori would be willing to weigh in, perhaps Linda be willing to weigh in, and I don't know if Ben's on the call or not. But here's, here's the situation. You gave us direction, the council gave us direction to put this hybrid meeting on. And so we are head down and we're working on it right now. It is challenging, it's, it will be very challenging in terms of trying to, you know, manage the presence of people in City Hall. At this point, I'll just let you know that there is a good possibility, probably, you know, about a 90% possibility, that aside from, from the courts and the police lobby and our community stations, that I will need to extend the closure of City Hall to May 30th. And the reason for that is that we will need some time to get equipment in place and things along those lines, like, for example, sneeze guards for our lobby areas and things like that, in order for us to reopen to the point of being a feeling that we're able to assure the safety of our, of our team members and our, and the public. So, you know, and on, on May 18th, we would be inviting the public here into City Hall while we actually have the majority of the facility closed. So, nonetheless, we can, we can, we are working hard to figure out what that would look like, but, but it will be, it will be a pretty heavy lift. And Lori or Linda, do you guys want to jump in here and mention anything?
No, I just would second that, and I think Ben, communications manager, said it best on me. We can do it, and we can make sure that it looks good and professional and is of the quality that we're used to having. It is just one of the more clunky ones to do, being that it's Grandview Station hearing, and we have a lot of dynamics with that. And it will be our first time where we have the logistics of the people flow through the building. And so it's our, it's our, it's a big one to start it off with, and then there's other dynamics about gatherings of 10, and so how many people can be in the council chambers and bringing the folks in that will bring in their, the appellant. And Mark and Rachel will likely not be in council chambers. So it's, it's just kind of a tricky one to do, we can do it, and we're working, and we got that direction, so we're working that way. Ben, Linda, Kristin?
Hi, everyone, thanks for your time. I would agree, and I would recommend that if there is the ability to take a look at still doing this in a remote kind of format, we are still moving forward and we're getting the business done. However, we're trying to take that cautious approach and ensuring that until we feel confident that structurally things are in place to safeguard all, all parties involved, that it would be, I feel, something that could flow a little easier, more easily and more comfortably for everyone involved if we kept it in a remote capacity. As Mark said, when we're preparing our facilities to open to the public, we are dealing with a supply chain demand of all sorts of structural improvements to safeguard these buildings and the people that come into them. And us, like many other entities, public and private, are in that supply chain demand. So we're literally waiting weeks to get some of these safety materials available to us to then install and have ready. So from that perspective, easing into it while still conducting the business and moving forward with the business that we need to move forward with, and balancing that with the needs to be safer than not for all people involved is where I land as well. Thank you.
Ben, did you have anything on this?
No, I concur with what all my colleagues have said. We will support, we will be able to support whatever council direction we receive.
Okay, so, Mr. Pfeiffer, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, just real quick, I just, just want some assurance that if we do it on May 18th, that we have a process in which it's understandable and accessible for public testimony. And that, you know, we do not create any artificial barriers based on, you know, difficulties to make it easy for people to access. Either testimony coming into us via email or the mail is put into the record, able to get on and either video or audio and validate that they're a citizen and all those other things. Just make sure we're working through all the logistics around that and make sure we can do that for remote.
And in that vein, oh, go ahead, Rachel.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, we are definitely looking through a lot of those options. We want to provide as many opportunities for the public to interact with you as possible. But I think as everyone has stated, we're, we're going to be going through a proceeding that's highly technical from a legal perspective. We're trying to make the process as smooth as possible so that people can do that interaction. At the same time, it will be a learning experience for all of us, since it'll be the first time that we do that hybrid process.
Do we have a practice one, maybe we should do?
We are going there, absolutely.
Is there something little we can do that can give us an opportunity to crawl, walk, run?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, we can share our flow charts with you and the plans and all that kind of stuff. So we're definitely trying to think through all those options, but it is going to be a big hearing. There's going to be a lot of people who want to participate, and I think inevitably, while we strive for perfection, it will at the same time be the first time that we have done it this way. And so there may be things that come up that we did not anticipate, but we are absolutely taking every precaution to make sure that we are thinking as detailed as possible about how this process goes and how smoothly.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, thank you. So here's what I think, I understand the one side of it, the developers are comfortable with us, you know, doing it so soon, and they have a financial vested interest to get this dealt with. But I think it's important to consider the other side. We have someone who spent a bunch of money and spending money on legal fees and hiring attorneys and things like that. And, you know, I, I don't know that we can say, hey, we'll only do this if you're okay with it, but I really worry about just setting up a scenario where regardless of the outcome, somebody's going to take court action because of the, of how we did it. And I would, I would encourage us to, as difficult as it may be, make sure we have an all-of-the-above options available, which means some one or more of us should probably be in the chambers going from there, and citizens should have an opportunity to make public testimony in person, as well as the options of doing it online. I really worry about doing this only online, this thing will have enough interest and enough heat. And I worry that if we don't provide an all-of-the-above strategy that someone, either of the two protagonists there are going to likely be looking at the courts for redress, and I don't, if we can avoid putting either side through that, I would like to see us do that. So I would encourage us not to just do it electronically. I know it's hard, and we have more risk because of our position, but sometimes that's just the way it is. If our risk is too great to do it that way, I would suggest, even if the applicant, the developer, would like to do it sooner rather than later, that we continue to hold them off a little longer until we can do it that way, because that'll be a far less interruption for him than being tied up in district court over it.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, I agree with Mr. Marriott that we should have, have the ability to somebody show up in person. I'm thinking this through, you know, we talked about the traffic flow of bringing people into chambers, but we have the most incredible KATV team. And so if we had cameras set in different areas, we may be able to move things through a little bit quicker. If we had a camera set for somebody didn't, you know, they didn't want to be in council chambers, but they wanted to be recorded and they can't figure out how to do it on their computer, but they want to be seen, we could have that option. We could have the option of having people arrive one at a time in council chambers. And I think when people see that there are four people at the dais, but then they can see the other three up on the screen, and they know that we can see them, I think that makes them feel more heard and, and it gives people that feeling of, you know, what, I did exactly what I wanted to do, I got in front of city council and they saw me. And then you have the folks that would, don't mind coming into a Zoom and, because they know that we can see them just as well as they can see us because they're comfortable with it. I think that, I think that might ease some, some people's minds a little bit.
Hey, Ms. Ford?
Ms. Morris, I wanted to ask you, is this, would this be setting a precedent on quasi-judicial matters?
So we have a policy that we've drafted up that will likely be bringing to you soon that will outline when we are okay with doing a quasi-judicial proceeding remotely and when we aren't. So what I was very clear in this draft policy to set up is the fact that we don't want to use remote, remote meetings on a regular basis for quasi-judicial proceedings. If we can, it's always, it's nice to have that in-person contact. But I don't think, the other thing that we were careful to set up in that draft policy is that we're not creating the expectation by applicants that if they, that this will be a regular option. This is an option that we are offering as a result of this particular emergency and for public health reasons.
And do we know if anyone else has done this anywhere else in the United States? For this type of meeting?
Yeah, I don't know that anyone has necessarily done the hybrid meetings, but I know they, that certain quasi-judicial proceedings and hearings have been held remotely with very, a variety of different options available for participation in a completely remote setting. So we certainly would not be the first to offer that option.
I just want to add one, one comment that I have would be that we run the risk of our more susceptible residents who not only are susceptible to the disease, or the virus, I should say, but might be more likely not to have the equipment in order to speak. in order to speak. So, um, we would, I, I think in, if we were going to do this, we would have to have some way that, um, everyone really truly feels like they have access. And then, and then, you know, again, in terms of age, uh, you may have more, uh, issues with, um, disable, disabilities or, or, you know, mobility restraints, uh, making it more difficult. I'm just wondering if that would be, uh, would complicate, uh, this process.
My understanding, um, given the Zoom meetings that we have done thus far, is that it's, um, calling in is also an available option. We've been planning for individuals to be able to, like, let's say they have, uh, an exhibit that they want to share with council. We're providing them with the opportunity to give us that beforehand so that we can display it for them. So there would be options for people who aren't necessarily comfortable with, um, video interaction. The, the downside of allowing video interaction would be that there are people across the nation who have taken advantage of that in a public meeting to do something inappropriate. So, um, we're, we're trying to think through some of those risks so that when we come to council and propose this process, that, that we've thought through it in a lot of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
I just wanted to echo the comments of Mr. Marriott and Ms. Miller, that I think that having all options available to everyone is great, particularly if we move forward with this date. Um, and then, uh, if, if we just can't make the logistics at City Hall work, I know that, uh, different, uh, bodies have been, uh, changing venues as needed. I just saw that the Arkansas State Legislature held a, uh, held a vote in the, uh, University of Arkansas Little Rock Baseball Stadium. So if that is at all something that we have to consider, it might be possible to go to one of the local football or baseball stadiums where we can socially distance a lot more easily. Um, not saying we need to, but just saying the option might be on the table if we need it to be, so.
Hey, Mr. Jones, you're next.
Um, yeah, I guess, you know, the reality, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, whatever it is that we end up ultimately doing. It seems to me like it's best to just postpone this until we can get, um, everybody, uh, comfortably back into council chambers and do it in person with no masks, et cetera. So, again, I'm happy to participate, um, in whatever way makes the most sense, but it sounds like it is going to add additional stress and burden to the city, um, team to get that ready, even in a hybrid, uh, solution. Um, and so rather than make it worse, um, I think, uh, as Mr. Marriott said, um, let's just postpone this and do it when people can be in, you know, in the same room, uh, to have the conversation. So that's my two cents.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Just have a question for Ms. Morris. This topic that I've spent four separate Zoom meetings on today is, uh, my counterparts across the country are seeing a lot more, um, lawsuits come up with the liability of masks. And so I just want, something I didn't even want to bring up today, but I feel necessary, I feel like it's necessary now, is that if somebody wore a mask into City Hall and thought that, you know what, that's the only place I have been, and I have COVID now, you know, what's the, what's our liability there? And, you know, have you been talking to other municipalities that are bringing up the same thing?
You know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything come up yet in terms of litigation related to, um, actually contracting the virus, um, in your, in the interactions with the public facility. I suppose there would always be some, um, theory, tort liability theory that could be raised there. Uh, one of the fortunate things in Colorado is we have a great, um, governmental immunity statute, so we, it would, the claims would have to be framed such they, they fell within one of the exceptions to governmental immunity. So we want to be, a, and really, I think at this point, our, our obligation to the public is probably, probably exceeds what we're worried about in terms of our legal liability. Um, so a lot of times, the advice that, that I provide to Mr. Devon and his team is that, you know, we want to do the right thing by the public, and we will, um, we'll deal with those issues as they arise. Um, but I think it's important for us to be responsible, and if we're trying to be responsible and we can demonstrate what we've done to do that, then we would, we would have defenses for those types of claims. But I can certainly keep an eye on that. Um, I haven't heard a lot on the national attorney listservs yet about those types of law.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, um, lawsuits have started with Walmart. I, have you heard of those with the folks that have died? And there are two lawsuits right now that have been filed against Walmart with their employees that have died of COVID. And so there are, yeah. It was a big article in New York Times about another business or another business that had been, um, you know, sued, and, and so now it's, you, chambers of commerce are really getting stressed for their businesses that that's going to be our next incredible topic of.
Yeah. With employees, there's certainly, there, there's a potential, bigger potential for liability. Um, we're forcing them to be in a certain place at a certain time and to do a certain thing. With the public, public has a few more choices about, about what they do, but that's certainly a topic we can talk about and that, um, we can start working through.
Okay, well, here's, here's my thoughts. Uh, first, I think we ought to talk to the applicant and see if, get their thoughts in terms of pushing it off some, um, to avoid potential litigation issues, uh, in terms of, of, you know, creating additional grounds for appeal on either side. Um, so see where the applicant is in terms of possibly, uh, delaying it. I, you know, certainly, I've been a, damn the torpedoes full speed ahead on this, but I am concerned that, you know, if, if we can't physically get City Hall in a place where it needs to be, particularly in light of what Mr. Devon's telling us, that we may be delaying opening City Hall till May thirtieth to open it just for this hearing, seems kind of inappropriate. Um, so the, the safe, and frankly, the conversation I have with my fellow mayors, that they were pretty surprised that we were thinking about doing something prior to June. Um, may have been a little eye-opening for me as well. Um, so I'm, I'm leaning towards delaying it until, uh, we can conduct it as a more normal. I think, though, at that point, we may still have to give people the option to call in, uh, by Zoom or whatever, if they don't want to come to City Hall, because there are going to be people who are, you know, thanks to our media and others, who believe that, you know, they're not going to come out of their cocoon until 2022. So, um, I think that's the better, better approach.
And, and, and I, I, I would just like to maybe add, uh, particularly in response to Councilmember Jones's, uh, comments, that we, we may be in a better position in June, but we may still have some level of, of, uh, of, uh, maximum occupancy issues. You know, I don't know if it's going to be ten, it might be more, but it's, I bet you, I'm, I'm sure we're not going to be able to fill the council chambers. I'm sure there's still going to be social distancing, and, and, and there still may well be a requirement, uh, or, well, we don't know this, but there could be a requirement around masks as well. So, uh, you know, well, uh, these, these are all things that, um, we don't know right now, uh, that they're potentially yet to be determined.
And, and I will tell you that, and Mr. Marriott and I have talked about this, neither one of us are real fond of the idea of wearing masks in council chambers as elected officials. So, and Mr. Jones is indicating this, as, as is Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I'm ordering designer ones.
What's that? And you ordered some designer ones?
I'm gonna order, I'm picking out fabrics later and ordering some designer ones because I figure we're going to have it no matter what. This is going to go on a while.
Yeah, I know it's going to go on for a while, but, you know, I think as elected officials, and we can maintain physical distance from each other, wearing a mask as an elected official in a public hearing really does not sit well with me. So, okay, well, Mr. Devon, it looks like you may get a reprieve from your overzealous mayor. Um, so let's, um, let's do it right instead of doing it fast on this one.
Okay, we will, uh, as you asked, we will reach out to the applicant and talk about, uh, a delay into June. It'll, it'll make the, uh, June, June calendar, uh, pretty interesting. We may have to push a couple of other things out as, as a result. Or we may have to also, well, I guess we'll have to check the, 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 uh, calendar, uh, but we could certainly use the June twenty-ninth, uh, fifth Monday date, uh, if we wanted to do that, or we could use the June twenty-second date, which is the appointee evaluation date, and maybe make the appointee evaluations on June twenty-ninth. I mean, there's, there's some options there. I don't know if Kristin's on the call, she might be cringing right now, but, um, uh, well, she is on the call, she's probably cringing, but, you know, we'll, we'll talk over some options on what that might look like.
She doesn't look like she's cringing too much. Ms. Miller?
Kristin was muted, and she just said something, so.
I'm sorry, I just said, we'll make whatever you want work.
You're so good. Ms. Miller?
We love you. You're the best. So I, um, I just wanted to throw out there that although, you know, if we do happen to push this, um, event down the road, you know, according to the Colorado Public Health Association, this virus is going to come back with a vengeance in the fall, and if we don't have, if we don't have a, a antivirus or whatever it is that we need, vaccination or whatever, um, we're, we're going to end up in the same space. And so I think that we still need to think about what it looks like to be able to conduct business virtually, business meetings, have public hearings, and have that entire thing laid out, instead of coming back in August saying, how should we do this? Because we didn't have to do it now because we pushed this process into June. So I just want to throw that out there as, you know, I just like to be prepared for that.
Good point. Okay, anything else? Yes, Ms. Ford?
Well, I just wanted to say, I, I agree with what Ms. Miller, uh, just said there, uh, but we did talk about before about having a meeting that may not be quite as controversial as the Grandview Station, but would require some, uh, public comment, and I personally feel that that would be a, a good thing to start out with, uh, to, to really work on this technique. Um, you know, instead of going with the big one, let's go with something a little bit smaller.
Like waste hauling?
Yeah, like waste hauling. Uh, we may want to consider pushing that one out, too. Uh, well, like the land development code. You know, land development code is very important, and certainly we can get a lot of public input from that, but it's not an emotional topic, and I think that's the difference. You know, you're talking about public opinion on an emotional topic versus one that's not as emotional. Just a thought.
Okay. And anything we could have the engineers talk about, we can certainly do remotely so that I could take a nap while they're talking.
You didn't mean that.
I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that, I'm kidding. Okay, anything else for the good of the cause? I see no hands raised. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.